Should also get a little consent pop up to be recorded for the meeting tonight. And thank you so much. Thank you so much, everybody for being here on a gorgeous day up here in Western Washington. See a couple of folks from Texas on the call with us tonight. Not exactly sure how the weather is out there. Talked to my parents yesterday and it's gone from, you know, raining for four and a half straight days to being at 104 with a temperature with a heat index. So wherever you are, I hope you're comfortable.
Well, hey there. My name is Liz Lovlett and I want to start welcoming people here tonight. I'm the, for those of you I don't know, I'm the former city council member and now Senator for the 40th Legislative District. And I've lived in Anacortes for a long time and I could not be more thrilled to be here supporting Amanda. I want to start by acknowledging that we are gathering here together on the land that has been protected for time immemorial by the Coast Salish People and specifically our local tribes, the Samish and the Swinomish. So welcome everyone on this beautiful, starting to turn into summer day to support one amazing candidate for Anacortes City Council. And I want to also acknowledge that there's many other electeds here and other people running for office here. So there are so many community organizers in the room. It's just so great to see your faces here to support Amanda. So I have the great pleasure of introducing someone who's very dear to me, who is, has been in our community for so many years, supporting great candidates. I think of her as one of the godmothers of, of local politics, you know, and when, when you want to run for office, you, you gotta go talk to Rita because she's, has this just pure heart and just open arms for getting good people to run for office and all of the time and effort that she puts in, getting great candidates like Amanda, all the way to their, their position. And so with that, I'd like to finish this welcome to you all by introducing Rita Sullivan.
Good evening. Well, I'm so excited to be supporting Amanda. I have been thinking today about how, what I would like to say about her. And I go back to when we first met in 2017, when she was very new and I was encouraging her to be the campaign manager for John Petrich, Petrich with a C. And it, it was a scary thing for her because she had not done that before, but she has such a can do spirit. And then, you know, roll up the sleeves and get the job done kind of spirit to her. I, I knew she would be successful and I was thrilled to be able to kind of mentor her and have her back through that process. And ever since then, she's taken on increasing responsibilities and new activities and it's always with that same kind of can do, I want to get it done. Let's, let's make it happen kind of spirit. But I'm sure she's going to bring that to the city council because she cares so much about Anacortes. And, you know, we all, we all certainly care about Anacortes, but Amanda's going to be able to do an awesome job. I know it. So go Amanda.
Thank you so much Rita. I really, really appreciate that. And Rita is also one, the one that I can give credit to for helping me get my job at the legislature. She gave me a little bit of a heads up when former representative Jeff Morris was looking for a legislative assistant. And again, I said, sure, why not? Like, one of the things I've been thinking about is, um, what is my why? And my why is why not ultimately? And so that's one of the other reasons that, you know, I, I am where I am. So Rita, thank you so much. I really, really appreciate you, honey. Next up, we're gonna have Shay Chualbert speak for us tonight.
Thanks Amanda. Well, you know, I want to start by thanking you because running for office is not for the faint of heart, is it? And this isn't a normal year. So we might all think that running for city council in a little town, eh, you know, so what? But we know that there's a national movement afoot to try and change the tone and tenor of our local governments and it's at play here in Anacortes. If we don't support great candidates like Amanda, I think what we love about our town is really at risk of being gone. So thank you. I have run seven successful campaigns and I think I know what it takes to win. And I think Amanda has it. So for those of you who don't know me, I used to serve on a very large school board and I served five terms in the legislature. And they also ran the housing tax campaign that Anacortes citizens so generously passed not that long ago. And I, but I wanted, I want to tell you a story about Amanda. So we could tell a lot of stories. So there is a person in town who was literally deathly ill, literally on death's doorstep and a very complicated situation. His insurance company, I'm sure you're all sitting down for this, his insurance company denied the coverage that he needed to go where he needed and get the treatment. And he reached out to Representative Ramel's office and with Alex's support and permission, Amanda went to work. It was a complicated situation and she totally grasped it. She really got it right away. She understood the urgency. She knew exactly who to call and just what to say. And I'll tell you, by the end of that very same day, the insurance company had changed its tune. That person is still alive today in no small measure, thanks to Amanda's efforts as well as Alex's, of course. But, but I think it illustrates what we want. Someone with great values, great energy, great compassion and a lot of ability. I think that Amanda's got the energy and actually the time despite her job to work this campaign and we're going to need her to really work it. We can't afford to lose this race. So let's not think of this as a normal year because I don't think it is. And yeah, Amanda, I'm enthusiastically behind you as I'm pretty sure everybody else on this Zoom call is. And we're going to need to work hard because you can't do it by yourself. But I'm, I'm so honored to, to be here and speak for you tonight.
Thank you so much Shay. That means so, 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 so much. And yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. I do remember that day specifically and Alex and I have had many days like that, as have all of the other, you know, members of, of our delegation here. And it's, it's tough and it's so rewarding. And you're, again, you're absolutely right. I know that I can bring that same energy to the city council. Thank you. Thank you so much. Anthony, honey, it's good to see you tonight. You are next up, my dear friend.
Well, you know, I'm delighted to first of all, be included in such a wonderful posse. I call posse's a good thing because it's a collection of people that come together for whatever reason and they work together. In this case, it's for someone truly exceptional. When I first met Amanda, you know, forgive me Amanda, but when I first met Amanda, I saw Minnie Mouse. But I didn't realize how much of a roar she had. And she delivered the goods, I mean, just, it's hard to find words for the hard work that she put in, in helping to elect the, one of the Anacortes Port Commissioners. I was impressed. But even by that, just the tenacity, the will to push forward despite dogged opposition, all of the chatter that says why, why you can't. She kept insisting why we can't. And she's done it. And so serving the city council, having the pleasure to of course, serve with Liz on council and coming in under some tutelage that she brought forward and now the leap into state politics. I'm applauding this catapult that we have here in Anacortes. And I say that to say, when I think about how Deborah, of course, Alex, I don't want to miss anybody in this whole thing because they truly were at the core of what makes this district so successful. Because we have extraordinary people representing us. Amanda will add to the collection, I believe. And you know, but I'm, I don't know the other person running in this, but what I do know is Amanda. And I have utter confidence. And I mean that, just from the bottom of my heart, utter confidence that city council and the city of Anacortes will be enriched by her presence on council. And I applaud that. And I am looking forward to serving with her, pushing with her. And as I think Don Lewis said, being good trouble for this rock we call Fidalgo Island. So I applaud you. I support you and thank you.
Anthony, thank you so much. I don't know why it just hit me, but yeah, absolutely. We're going to get to work together. Like, and not just every single Monday, the conversations that happen between that committees that we could sit on together. My heart's just all aflutter. So thank you so much for that. In the spirit of kind of reintroducing myself to some folks that may be watching this video on one of our social media channels, an official introduction. My name is Amanda Hubick. I use she/her pronouns. I'm running for Anacortes City Council, position four. I grew up in Texas in a very, very small town of about 600 people. Moved out here to Anacortes in 2005 and this is about the size that I want to keep. Anacortes has been an incredible home to me and I am just thrilled to be here and to live here and to work here and to play here. Some of y'all know me through my job in Olympia, working as a state legislative or as a legislative assistant to state representative Alex Trammell here in the 40th. My job before that was at the Anacortes Chamber of Commerce where I focused on tourism for the Fidalgo, for Fidalgo Island. So that was, I thought that was the best job until I got to the legislature, but it's still one of the things that I just kind of naturally do. My photographer came up on Friday and we were getting some shoots for the website. And when we were out in Coslin Park, we had about four or five people just kind of walk through folks that I know from the chamber. And that's just kind of what my days are like, you know, when I hang out in town. And I love it. I love being connected to the community. I feel like this is the perfect time to really, really dive in and give back. One of the things that Shay mentioned was the time that my job takes. But I also want to recognize that there's still a lot of other stuff that I hope to continue to do that I really enjoy. Currently, I sit on the Anacortes Housing Authority as an appointed commissioner by the mayor. I'm also Secretary of the Board of Directors for Skagitlingers, which is basically a food recovery co-op out in Mount Vernon. But they also do a lot of other things like teaching financial stability and there's, they were trying to figure out a way to do like food preservation right before COVID hit, but see where we get with that. It's a, it's an amazing program and I encourage all of you to go look it up after we're done with this. I just finished up my fourth year on the Swan Board, the Skagit Women's Alliance and Network. And that is an incredible organization that not only recognizes women who have dedicated their lives and their, their hopes and dreams to the Skagit. But it also recognizes women that are up and coming in their careers and it works to give scholarships to women that are looking to advance their education. So it's absolutely a fantastic organization. I've also done volunteer work here and there with the Skagit Land Trust with the Anacortes Arts Festival. I'll be volunteering there again this year on Sunday, probably closing down, but I could be there all day. Doing the Skagit Plastic Reduction and Recycling Coalition. And then as Rita said, I ran a successful quarter of Anacortes Commissionaries in 2017. My commitment to public service runs deep and so I am just, I'm here today with y'all. Happy to answer questions that you're going to have and happy to continue to answer questions that we'll have right up until, you know, the ballots drop in November. My focus is world center for this campaign and for years after that around housing affordability for the lower and middle working class. I've, I've gotten really lucky in my housing journeys here on the island, but I've almost been priced out of this, this town. It's, it breaks my heart. It's a struggle. And I think that it's one of the things that are at the core of some of the things that we're fighting against, looking for diversity in the people that we can hire, especially at the city, but also at some of the larger employers. I looked today online and as far as rentals go in town, there are six of them, I think, that are listed online right now. And only one of them is under $2,000. And that's more than my mortgage right now. So I really want to focus on finding really creative ways to work with nonprofits. I've done a little bit of digging around the last couple of weeks and have fallen in love with the Community Land Trust model. So my list just keeps getting bigger and bigger of people to talk to, but some folks out in the islands are definitely on my list to kind of dig into. So also if anyone here has people that I should talk to, send me an email, send me a text. I'll put my website up in the chat or if anybody else knows it and wants to do it for me, look, look at me asking for help. I've got contact information there. Would love referrals for people to talk to. I also want to make sure that we focus on preserving the forest lands and the shoreline. Everybody loves the forest lands. Everybody loves the parks. Everybody loves, you know, kind of stopping and relaxing. Same thing with the shorelines. Everybody loves the beach. I've gotten up into stand-up paddle boarding just recently this year and it's amazing. Well, one of the things that the shoreline actually does is it supports a real strong part of our maritime heritage. And that's, you know, where Anacortes came from. That's where Anacortes needs to continue to go. But we've got to find a way to do it safely and cleanly and responsibly. So city council makes a strong push for policy there. I'm going to be a champion for that area as well. We also need to focus on equitable access to social services like mental health needs. I have permission to share the story, but one of my best friends has a daughter who I think had just hit that ripe old age of 18 and was considered an adult, you know, by the state. And she couldn't access the services that she needed. And it was a heart wrenching 72 hours to try to figure out what we could do to help this person that needed help. And she, we all kind of worked our magic and found ways to get things taken care of. And, you know, the story has a happy ending, but it still is just insufferable that we had to go through that, you know? And that's, that's something that I still need to dig into. I'm not as knowledgeable as I know I can be. But I also know that, you know, mental health accessibility is changing, you know, every year. It gets better through work at the legislature. I can't necessarily lobby for stuff when I'm in session Monday through Friday at my desk. But as a city council person, I'm pretty confident that I can work with both our lawyers and with Darcy out at City Hall to make sure that we don't cross any weird little gray lines. So that's kind of a quick summary. I don't know how actually quick it was. Time flies when you're talking about yourself. But I hope you have a better understanding of who I am, of what I hope to get accomplished through this campaign and over the next four years. And I would love to take any questions here, any of your stories, hear any of your concerns. So the floor is yours, my friends.
Can I just jut in here? Yeah. My name's Brittany Holly and this is my husband Scott Holly and we've known Amanda for a little bit. Now we're co-owners Eddie Line Kayaks, a local Skagit County manufacturing company. And just wanted to kind of give Amanda a shout out about what she's about. In addition to the long list she just gave, I don't know how you do it, girl, but you're amazing. But she introduced us to this State Parks and Rec Department. And now we're kind of joining forces with them to become part of like a safe paddle steering committee for working with kids, getting them on the water. You know, what better way to get community and children and families invested in, you know, the shoreline here, the water that we all get to enjoy here in the Pacific Northwest. And so I just think one of those, that's just a, an example, a small one, but could have huge impact. And, you know, it all starts with conversation and we're just really excited about that. And she's just an awesome advocate for the community and that she lives in and for the county in general. I think she just, you know, her heart's here and we really appreciate that about her. So I just wanted to give that shout out before I have to run off to work. So I'm gonna disappear.
Thanks so much Brittany. And Brittany is this incredible lady. She's over here delivering babies day in and day out. So thank you for your service and all you've done as a nurse, honey. Mona Dos has joined us. Yay!
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to say a few words about Amanda. I mean, I know it's the love fest, but Amanda and I work very closely together on some legislation. And I just, I just, Amanda, I think you're amazing. I'm so proud of you for stepping up. Thank you for running. I know exactly how hard it is to do it. And I'm just so proud of you for doing it and really wanting to further your public service, your long list of accolades by stepping up to serve your community. You are exactly who we need to be running for office. I'm so incredibly excited to support you. I will be donating my signature $101 and I do encourage everyone. In my Indian culture, the extra dollar is indivisible and it's good luck. So tonight, if you want to add an extra dollar to the gift, it'll be indivisible and good luck for Amanda. And again, thank you for running. I'm so proud of you and I'm so incredibly impressed with you as I've gotten to know you over the last few years. So thanks for all you do.
Mona, you are just so sweet and I really, really, really appreciate you. You are somebody that I admire and I honor. And your tenacity is inspiring. So thank you for setting a good example for what we all need to get to doing. I couldn't have done it without you.
And I'm on vacation, so I'm going to let you all go, but I just wanted to stop by and share how amazing Amanda is. So take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Lots of love.
Bye, honey. Robert, Andrea, I see y'all have your name up, your hand up.
Yeah. Yeah. This is really exciting, Amanda. It's just great. It really, and you can just feel this excitement on the screen here. And I do want to say that I only needed to call you one time during the last session, but I got an answer right away. I mean, like immediately. So thank you very much. I do have a question. It's kind of a, maybe an odd question, but I'm going to throw it at you anyway. You know, when people run for office, they always talk about what they want, what they want to see, what they, so forth. And they, they're, what they're in favor of and what they love. But I want to do a reverse. Is there anything that you have, when you run for city council and you're representing Anacortes and you're looking at the future of Anacortes, is there anything that you would say you would not want to see?
I don't want Anacortes to be called Can't Afford Us anymore. That's something that I think just, it's, it's not funny anymore at this point. I think that it's very exclusionary. It feels like one of those things that just kind of, you know. But other than that, like the people here are absolutely fantastic. We have incredible nonprofits that work together at the drop of a hat. We have incredible organizations here that do, do so much. I mean, that, that community spirit in and of itself, I don't think will ever be washed away. But that's a really good question. Can't Afford Us was the thing that immediately came to mind, but I'm absolutely going to sit on that and think about it and get back to you with a better.
All right. Thanks.
You're welcome. I'm writing notes right now, y'all. Anastasia, I see you have your hand up.
Hi. So I just wanted to reiterate how happy I am to hear you talk about the lack of affordable housing here. I'm the chair of Fidalgo Nature School. We're an out, a fully outdoor preschool. And we've partnered this last year with this Deception Pass State Park. So that's our new home forever, which is great. We started out in Washington Park. And we have these lovely teachers who have great experience in early childhood education, have great experience in environmental education, have master's degrees. And we can't find housing for our teachers. We can't find a place for them to live. Fortunate this year, we were able to get them into the housing at the park where the American volunteers usually are. Because of COVID, they didn't have those volunteers, but this next year they will. So now we're scrambling, trying to figure out how to support our teachers with affordable housing. And if we don't have it, how are we going to keep our school going without teachers being able to live here? So I just wanted to reiterate how glad I am to hear you say that you're taking that on. So thanks.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And like I said earlier, always welcome to have conversations about this further. I got called in the jury selection yesterday. And so I didn't get a lot of stuff done that I wanted to get done, but I had a really nice conversation with a young man in the construction industry. And we were talking about what it costs to actually build buildings. Does it make sense to add on, you know, personal living space rentals on top of existing commercial buildings? And that's not the case. And so that's one of the other things that I think we're just going to kind of struggle with. Anacortes has so much character in our downtown, but it's all, you know, one floor of character. And it's going to be really hard to see a lot of change there happens. I think that we can investigate things that, there's spaces along our avenue. There's probably properties right past Commercial along M Avenue where you can revitalize some of those spaces. But again, I need to do some digging into what Community Land Trust stuff actually looks like to figure out how the city can buy land and have partnerships with builders. What kind of incentives can we offer? And then how can we do it well and do it safely? You know, the last thing you want to do is build a cheap house that either or multifamily complex that falls apart in 20 years or where the duct work isn't installed properly. We're having conversations, you know, at the state level as to what requirements are going to look like for building codes. So making sure that we keep it safe is just as equally as important as keeping it affordable. So, but thank you so much, Anastasia. It's good to keep that stuff top of mind. Did anybody have anything else? Anthony?
You know, I try to wait my turn. People somehow think I'm loquacious, even though I'm not really. Just kidding. One of the things that's so important as a sitting city councilman and as someone looking forward toward the future of Anacortes and our role within Skagit County. You know, I think that we have a lovely city, but there's some tweaks we need to do as we move and look toward that future. One of the things that I'm really hoping you would speak a little bit on and just elaborate a little on your thoughts. We have a tremendous opportunity given COVID's proof that you can work remotely. And that in working remotely, meaning production is up, performance is up, that we have a great opportunity here in Anacortes, given our fiber that we're putting in 5G. It's spreading across the city. I wouldn't think that the city could push a little bit harder toward recruiting smaller businesses, maybe not the giants, but just smaller businesses that could operate satellite locations. And we have 5G. I think that that's a part of how we can also get those smaller businesses, those people whom could likely would like to live here, but they could also be employed. those people whom could likely would like to live here, but they could also be employed here. And I just want you to elaborate a little, a little bit on that. I, I know you care about it, just like I do. I know you care about making sure that we've got equity across the lines for all kinds of people and that you will stand on that, even if you're standing alone. Am I right about that? Just elaborate a little bit.
Absolutely. Well, one of the nice things that the state has made a good push on through the Department of Commerce is to build the Office of Broadband. So there's a very concerted and focused effort at the state level to improve accessibility, you know, for internet services. And it's not even just like, businesses are great too, but it's also one of the things that's gonna come in really handy for like parents with school-aged children, if they need to do summer school virtually or something like that. That could also tie into home-based businesses. The state has also put together the Office of Women and Business Minority, OWMB, Office of Women and Minority Business Entrepreneurs, I think it is. But they also do incredible grant programs. I think that with better access to broadband and internet services too, you'll have better access to healthcare, which is something that not everybody has, you know, immediately. Telehealth has become better utilized, the more comfortable that we get with it. So I think, I think that that's a really, really great comment, Anthony, and I really appreciate you bringing that up. I've been working from home since session ended last year. I mean, we still have the district office where we get our mail and stuff, but working from home is, for me, it's been absolutely fantastic. I get to hang out with my cat, who was vocalizing her opinions in the background as well. You know, I, I, I still get my work done, as Alex can attest to, but it's also really nice to, you know, when you throw out 30 emails to throw your laundry in the wash and then come back and take care of it, and I feel a little bit less behind. And I think that that probably could also help the mental health of a lot of people as we're, we're working through this as well. So thank you for that, Anthony. I'm gonna do a little bit more digging around on that as well. I've got my little notepad here, so thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate you. Rosio, I see you've got your hand up. Thank you for waiting.
Sorry, I just wanted to wish you all the luck, all the best and luck. Now that I'm back in the 40th, I'm gonna be reaching out to the caucus tonight. I hope you're able to, I'm sorry, can't join the event tomorrow. But I will be sending you many good vibes. Let me know what I can do to help you in the 40th. I'm excited to be back and I fully 100 support everything you do. I'm not gonna get emotional here, but I definitely really do appreciate you and your patience in your listening ear and just really being there for the Latino community, for Skagit, for the 40th. You've touched my heart and I know that you're gonna touch other people's hearts tomorrow, hopefully, if you, if you're able to attend. But I just wanted to tell you, I'm excited for you and I only expect best. And I know you'll get elected, like I told you, you're gonna get elected. Don't try and tell me you're not gonna get elected. But all I ask, the only thing I ask, whoever you got, if you quit, will you make sure that they'll have enough patience? That's all I ask, cuz you know I love calling the 40th, you know, you know, I'm talking to you guys. I always got something on my mind, but no matter what, you're going to succeed. And I am so unbelievably happy and I'm very proud of you and I'm so excited for you. And I can't wait to see you win, so I can, I can congratulate you. But let me know what I can do. You know, good luck and I will be here. Just let me know what I can do.
Absolutely, thank you. I will probably call you once every other week for a pep talk.
I'm definitely. It feels like my 40th legislative, people are leaving me right now from the, from Olympia. So I'm like, we gotta get another dream team. We don't have just the 40th Dream Team legislators. We have the LAs. We have our, our dream team with you and Kaylee and Jordan. So whoever replaces you, I'm telling you, they have big shoes to fill, so.
You've got me, you've got me for at least another two years. I've been talking with our staff supervisors, we're willing to figure out how to make it possible to where I can either work from here at home or work for the district office on Mondays so that I can be in person for a good chunk of the meeting. And next year's gonna be a little bit easier since it's a short session too.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, I won't ramble on anymore. I need to go see my dad.
Love you, Rosio. Thank you for being here. Andrea and Bob, you've got your hand up again, and then Eric.
I have some questions with regard to your campaign, Amanda. Is it going the way you hope it would? Is there, are there things for which you particularly would like some assistance? And do you have any plans for the Fourth of July?
I am, I'll go backwards. I am currently still finalizing my yard signs to order to march in the Fourth of July parade. I would love if anybody and everybody on this call who wants to meet us out there at, I think, 10:30 for lineup for 11 o'clock march off, wants to hang out and put on a bunch of sunscreen and wear fun hats. The campaign is going really, really well. The biggest difference from what I did with John Frisport campaign has been just the number of endorsements. I am very focused and stubborn in some ways. So I want to make sure that the phrasing on all of these are really, really right. So I've probably, probably spent a little bit more time on some of the endorsement questionnaires that is humanly logical, but it like the, the outpouring of support has been absolutely fantastic. People are willing to talk to me. Like I said, the builder that I spoke with yesterday, I ran into as one of his business partners at the groundbreaking for the Anacortes Family Center, handed off my cards that I would love to get some time with you all before the end of the month, got an email the next day, which is also just so indicative of the other reasons. One of the other reasons, many reasons that I love this community. People here are responsive and they're willing to work with you. As we get closer to the primary, I will definitely need help walking. So that'll be fantastic. And then I'm still trying to figure out kind of what my plan is for phone calls and texting and, and voter outreach and stuff like that. But I think I've got y'all on my list of supporters. You were one of the earliest ones to sign up.
Well, thanks for that and you'll hear more from everybody, I hope.
Thanks, y'all. Eric, what'd you want to say?
Thank you. This is a preamble to my, my question, I guess. I just want to note that we, Doug, a delegation from the Faith Action Network came by, I guess, your virtual office while we were visiting with Alex. And we talked about a number of issues that are important to us. And you were probably the most brilliant legislative assistant I've met in my, in my time wandering around. You, you knew all the issues, where they stood, what Alex's position was, and just wonderfully knowledgeable on, on everything we want to know about. So I really appreciate just your depth of understanding of the process of making legislation and how that works.
Thank you. And with that. I remember that conversation though. Let me jump in here real quick. Eric, y'all were also just absolutely fantastic. I think we ended up spending like 20 minutes, 25 minutes after, and a lot, it's a lot of like 10. And I just kind of started spewing out stuff about one of Alex's really complicated bills, the Healthy Homes Clean Buildings. And I finished talking and then I was like, I guess I know this bill better than I thought. It was absolutely fantastic. So having an easy group of people to talk to is, is encouraging, so.
I, I did write a letter to Alex right after that, asking him, that, or telling him that whatever you get paid is not enough. And he's gonna raise your, your salary, but I'm not too sure it ever happens. So I want to put Alex on the hot seat here, but no. For the, for the past couple of years, I've been working on a project to get more infant care and childcare and early learning in Anacortes. Right now, about 15% of the kids that want to be in a certified or full-time childcare can have that opportunity in Anacortes. I think 25% is, is you're at a desert level, and we're below that. I just want to thank you and Deborah and Alex and Liz for, for bringing some funding towards the Samish Early Learning Program to help us get a start for at least getting infant care. And I'm glad to see all these luminaries from state and, and, and city agencies here just to find some way to focus on, on getting that in Anacortes or more of that, because that certainly has a big impact on jobs in Anacortes. And how that is going to be accomplished with the four of you will be in five, including Anthony, will be an interesting prospect for the future.
Yeah, it's definitely something that was one of those other things that really came to light once the pandemic hit and just kind of kept hitting, you know, after schools closed and we needed to find a way for people to both, you know, maintain their job and their life and how do you take care of kids and also be a teacher. And, you know, being a nurse even sometimes, you know, when your kid gets sick in the middle of school, but it's actually, you know, like right next to you, the dinner table. And you've got so much that you've got to do. I, I really, really have a whole lot of respect for anyone that has had children over these last 18 months. Y'all are incredibly strong people. I admire you so incredibly much and anybody that, that works with children. So it's, it's absolutely fantastic to see good organizations come together to make it work. And another thing too, like when, when you start a project and you get that conversation started, more ideas just kind of keep coming out of it. I mean, and, and with this, cuz I'm right up the street from the Samish Center and I'm so excited to see what they do. And that's just gonna spew off, you know, five, six, 10, 15 other great ideas. So we'll see what happens in eight years when I decide I wanna run for mayor. We'll see how far we get. All right. Well, I think we are at a perfect time for Liz to take back over. Thank you so much, everybody, for all of your questions tonight. This is really helpful and I've got some more things to look into.
Wonderful. Well, I, I would like to pass it over to my seatmates for just a moment. I'm, I'm so glad that they are here tonight. We have, the 40th District family is here. So it's, it's definitely been such a challenging year and to have this, this conduit that we do between our LAs and our, our greater family of public officials around here is really something special. So I want to pass it over to Representative Alex Rammel.
Thanks, Liz. So I think I know most folks here, but a few I don't. I'm Alex Rammel and I think technically Amanda is legislative assistant in my office, but I think it's probably more accurate to say that I'm the legislator in her office. And the, the really, the good news, Rocho, is that Amanda is able to do both jobs and will be able to, to keep up, not just from the sort of, is there the, the time to be able to get back and forth and do both? But Amanda is capable of juggling a lot of different things and getting things done on every front with every responsibility that she takes on, as we've heard so many times already tonight. Because I work so closely with her, I feel like I have maybe sort of an inside track on understanding some of the skillsets that, that she exemplifies and that I think are important in, in this city council member. And the first is that she's a natural leader. Wherever, you know, whatever room she's in, she starts facilitating the conversation. She's taken on leadership roles, working with other legislative assistants and organizing projects, workplace improvements in Olympia, all of those kinds of things. She just, she just sort of comes in, takes over and starts getting stuff done and motivating the whole group to get things done. And I think that's gonna be an important part of why she's gonna be such a, a great city council member. I think everybody knows that she's an incredibly hard worker. She starts early in the morning, she ends late. I know cuz I get the emails. You know, she, throughout the day, she's got a checklist, she's getting things done, checking things off and working steadily on big projects. Again, that's, that's stuff we need in our city, city government officials. The ability to sort of break things down and just kind of get incremental improvements steadily day after day. And, and you know, it's exactly the, the attributes that Anthony was talking about. You know, to, to the point that Shay was making earlier, Amanda cares about people. She's told me a number of times that her favorite part of the job, or one of her favorite parts of the job, working in Olympia is constituent services, just being able to help folks connect the dots and get access to services that they need, helping people through, throughout the pandemic, helping people access unemployment insurance. When that was such a nightmare last year, just being able to help people is a rewarding part of the job for her. You can hear it in the way that she talks about the work that she's getting done. And that, that empathy, that concern for people is so important in somebody who's gonna be in a leadership role in the community. She's ready to learn. She gets excited about understanding new things, digging in. I think she said a couple of times in her remarks earlier, well, I did a little bit of digging into Community Land Trust, did a little digging. She just digs into new ideas, which, you know, no matter what your background and experience, once you're working in government, you're gonna have to learn a whole bunch of new things. And Amanda is not only good at it, but she embraces it eagerly, which is, I think, really important. As, as Eric pointed out, she is really easy to get along with. I think everybody already knew that, but it is super important to be able to build rapport, even with folks that maybe you don't always agree with, but to be able to find some common ground and build a productive, healthy relationship, so, so that you can work together. And she's organized. She knows the details. She tracks details over time. I think one of the most important things for me to be able to get a project done is to tell Amanda that it's a project, because then I know that it's gonna come up in a regular check-ins. We're gonna be talking about what's the next step? How do we get this done? She tracks those details. And again, in city government role, being able to stay on top of all of those little things, I think is, is incredibly important. And Amanda exemplifies that. I've told a lot of people that hiring Amanda is one of the best decisions that I've ever made in a job that really is just about making decisions. And now the whole city of Anacortes gets to make that same decision. Folks, hire Amanda. I cannot recommend her highly enough.
Deborah, are you gonna say hello? I would love to say hello. Hold on, Mom, hold on, Mom. My mom, my mom, my, my mother-in-law came by to say hi at my new house. So I just want to say a big hello to you, Amanda, and to everyone. It's so good to see all of you. Anthony, Shay, my seatmates, it's really great to be here. Andrea and Bob, thank you for the cherries. Andrea came down and knocked on my door. I just moved from Samish Island into Anacortes and I'm really happy to be here. And I, you know, Amanda, I really wanted to thank you for addressing the issues that you and I share. Alex has been through this and, and Liz always talks to, talks to this. And that's addressing affordable housing and homelessness as a priority here in Anacortes. And when I, I gotta tell a little story. When I first came to Anacortes, I met Amanda and I thought she was incredibly brilliant and smart. And every time I needed to go to and find out matters that were impacting Anacortes so I could better understand that when I was running for office, and then in the state legislature, y'all would know who I, who I would call. Ding, 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 type, 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 email, text, Amanda, where do we go? Amanda, here's an issue that's gonna impact Anacortes. Who should I speak to? What are the facts? What are the demographics? How are we gonna protect labor? How are we gonna protect the environment? Can you connect me? Can you connect me to, to Eric Johnson? He's working on childcare. Sets me up with Eric. Eric teaches me right away that there are fifteen hundred children in Anacortes between the ages five to zero that need childcare and how important that is to jobs within Anacortes. Because our demographics, right, Liz? We don't make a lot of money in Anacortes. We're labor-driven people. We work in the service industry. We need to be able to address making sure that we have enough childcare, as Amanda said, because Eric had sat down after the work from Amanda connecting me with him and we talked to the Chamber of Commerce about how important that is. Bye, Mom.
I love you.
Love you.
We have the time and we need to go shopping.
Okay, so my mom's leaving, so she gave me a kiss goodbye. But Amanda, I just gotta tell you, thank you. You know, we're so excited as, as our Senator and my, my seatmate Alex to be able to be a hundred and ten percent behind Amanda. She is smart, she goes into details, she understands the dynamics. She is able to bring local, tribal, state and federal governments together, not only politically, but also understanding the dynamics of funding. And who better than to have a councilwoman sitting down and understanding how to manage those layer, layers of policy and budgets in the same way we do, to always have Anacortes at the top of her heart and mind. Supporting Amanda to run for city council is, I mean, it's, it's an easy thing. It's an easy thing to be able to support you, Amanda, because we're all here, because you do so much work for us. But not only is Amanda running, but I've got Kaylee Galloway, my LA, who's running for Wauka Executive Council up in Wauka. So Liz, I would not be surprised if Jordan's running for office next year or for Port. We just don't know.
He's down in Thurston County, though. We don't get to benefit from what Jordan does here in the Fortieth, sadly.
He's, he's just fabulous. He's just, you know, this, this team of experts, and they really are experts. And you're absolutely right. We work in their offices. We work for Kaylee and Jordan and Amanda. They really do carry your guys' hearts with her, with them all the time and all the work that we do. Amanda, we appreciate you. I'm so happy to call your community home. I'm so happy to be moved into a tiny little house on Seventh Street, just down the street from all of you. Across the street from me is Liz's home, where her family came from. And so I'm really excited to be able to be here and be able to vote for you in November. So good luck to you. We're a hundred and ten percent in.
Yes, and speaking of voting, here's the thing about campaigns. We need you to vote, we need you to turn in your ballot, but there's a whole lot of work between here and there. And what we need from you right now is for everybody to open up your virtual wallets, open up your actual hearts and make sure that you are sending a nice big donation to Amanda, because she is ready to start hitting the streets and giving out information to voters all across Anacortes. And she can't hit those doors and, and knock on there and give them the information that they're gonna need to make that vote in November, unless she has some money in the bank right now to get materials printed, to get her signs out on the street, to make sure that people have great visibility. Campaigns are really expensive. They take a lot of, of work and so we need volunteers. But right now, this, this first kickoff, what we really need is one hundred percent participation in this fundraiser. So with that in mind, there, I'm hoping that many of you will, will match these hundred and one dollar donations, cuz that's a really good, that's a really good price point there. But maybe some of you can give five hundred dollars, five hundred and one dollars. For those of you that can give five dollars, we need that too. So one hundred percent participation here today. Let's see, what else? Campaigns get really rigorous. That Fourth of July Parade piece is a big one, you know? You have to, it, it's all the little things you wouldn't think of. You have to go buy candy for the kids. That's coming up in just a couple of weeks here. There's all these different, different elements at play. So I hope that you guys will put up in the chat here, when you make a donation, if you're able to walk with her on the walklist into the neighborhoods, walk in the Fourth of July Parade, make sure to email as soon as you can to Amanda so that she knows she can count on you for all those important behind-the-scenes pieces. Because having, having done this myself, you can't, you, you gotta knock every door in town. Especially, there's gonna be some contested races this year and it's gonna really come down to who can get to every door in Anacortes with their literature and their message and their platform planks. And Amanda is carrying those platform planks that are important to us, right? We wanna get where we need to go on housing, on the environment, on liaisoning between different levels of government and she's coming to the table with that skillset ready to go. So let's make sure we get Amanda here and I think we're at the, at the wrapping it up part, just as long as everybody's hit that link. Do you have one more thing to say?
If, if I can say just one last thing to amazing the alluring Amanda, the AAA. That's your stamp, okay? We gotta get you at the front of, front of the phone book like they used to do phone books. You know, I really wanna say thank you. I truly am going to give you every drop I got, my friend. And I really appreciate that. And just thankful that you're stepping up. You know, we need you. And the, the fight for all of us, the world, we really want to bring in. It is continuing and in this case, you know, we need you. And so I'm excited about that. And, and if I could digress for just one moment, one of the other people that's on this call, Amanda didn't, I mean, Anastasia did not mention that she's also running for school board. So I just wanted to throw that out to you, Anastasia Briznick. She's a dear, dear, dear friend. And if you know me, you'll know why I love her so much. And I love her and I'm gonna fight for her equally as I'm going to fight for Amanda. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Anthony. Liz, Alex, Deborah, everybody else on the call, this is just, this has been absolutely amazing. Like, between Rosio and me calling her for a pep talk and having this video to watch, I think that I've got the stamina to make it through right up until, you know, eight fifty-nine on election night. This is, it has been a lot of work, but I know that I've got your support and I've got your back. Alex, you have been absolutely incredible for me to text randomly at like seven fifteen at night or six thirty in the morning, since we're both usually up at the crack of dawn anyways with just the most random questions. And I only usually expect a yes or a no answer from anybody that I ask questions to and everybody's given me paragraphs. So it's been, it's been absolutely fantastic. I see something in the chat that Ryan had his hand up. I don't see him now. Ryan, if you wanna talk, you're more than welcome to. Okay, I got a text from him earlier. I know that he was doing double duty with a couple of different things, like so many of us are during campaign season. So I wanna be respectful of everybody's time here tonight. So thank you for spending a solid hour with us. As always, you are more than welcome to send me emails or send me a text. Campaign contact information is up on the website, realeasyamandahubick.com. It's just my name. I've got my platform, the donate button, email information, all sorts of stuff. Like Liz said, there's a supporter link that you can fill up on the website if you think you want to help doorbell or march in the parade or even write a letter to the editor, you know, once we get closer to the general election time. So thank you so much, everybody, from the bottom of my heart and I just really, really, really appreciate you. Have a wonderful night. See you again soon.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for being here.
Bye, y'all.